Six o'clock. All right, I want to call the meeting to order before I review the agenda. I just want to give a shout out to Superintendent Welch for her alumni award that she received over the weekend from Columbus State. I had the pleasure of going to her alumni award and I just want to say thank you for all that you do and I'm happy that we have you as our superintendent.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. All right, agenda review and disposition.
I have nothing to add or take away.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. Minutes of September 11th, 2023. Yep, good. Anyone have questions? Someone like to make a motion?
To accept it as written.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written, September 11th.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Principal's report, Tanya is joining us via Zoom today, so we're gonna kick it off to Tanya.
And if you'd like her to stop speaking, you have to speak.
You got it.
All right.
Or I will speak.
Can everyone hear me? Give me a thumbs up. Frank and Amy, all right, thank you. So we had a successful September, which was fantastic. Our enrollment is holding steady, nothing to report about enrollment. We were very lucky to get all of our middle school field trips off and running in here. So Geneva Point for the seventh graders, our fifth graders did the Memphis Mile. Our eighth graders were able to get to the White Mountains after a delay of a week due to the hot weather. Sixth grade did spend two nights last week, I believe it was last week, over at Ocean's Park, nature's classroom. Fourth grade went to Lost River Gorge in the Old Man viewing on September 28th. And our first grade on Friday went to Windy Ridge Apple Orchard before the rain came in. So some great field trips during the month of September. And we want to thank all of our parents and also Pam Martin for writing the grants to make those happen. So those are a big push for our school in terms of finances. And more importantly, I want to do a pretty huge shout out to all of the teachers and staff who chaperone those trips, particularly the overnight trips. Takes a lot of energy and those folks spend a night away from home and, you know, those are great traditions for the community of Plymouth, but they also take a lot of effort. So thank you to the teachers and staff who make that happen. In the area of curriculum instruction and assessment, I want to give everyone throughout this year a little taste of what with wisdom is. It's our new reading program. And I thought I would tell you what the unit topics are that each of the grades are focusing on right now. So Module One for kindergarten is the five senses. How do our senses help us learn? For Grade One, Module One focuses on a world of books. How do books change lives all around the world? In Grade Two, they are focusing on what's called a season of change. How does change impact people and nature? In Grade Three, they are studying the sea. How do people explore the sea? In Grade Four, the topic is a great heart. What does it mean to have a great heart, literally and figuratively? They explore the circulatory system and then also people who are brave and courageous. In Grade Five, the topic is cultures in conflict. How do cultures, beliefs, and values guide people? So as you hear about wisdom or your kids are in those classes, those are good topics to know about so you can have conversations with the kiddos. In the area of student wellness, staff wellness, social, emotional, and behavioral health, we wanted to update you, we were able to get a grant and Brooklyn Rainey, a local author, came in and spoke with our seventh and eighth graders about her book, "One Trusted Adult." It was a short presentation with the students, but it set the stage for conversations about reaching out if you need help and goal setting for both of those. Having a really optimistic view for your future is important. She also spoke with our faculty meeting and that was particularly meaningful. Some of the takeaways for our faculty that they named were kids need to be named, known, and valued. We had some conversations about that. The term mentor really stuck with one of the faculty members and the difference between a mentor and a social worker. And that teachers really need those strong boundaries, but also kids need those mentors. So understanding that. And one of the big takeaways that another teacher mentioned was being the adult that we may have needed when we were children. Those were some of Brooklyn's themes in her time with the faculty. We are working with P S U on the Christmas Angel Tree Project for students and families who need a Christmas present or two. And we're working to prepare for the November theme of understanding the benefits and concerns of social media. If you have any ideas or would like to participate in that work that we'll be doing in November, please reach out to me. Wanted to do some student shout outs tonight. So in Grade Three, Morgan Goulet won the Care Award. In Grade Four, Gabe Letuski. And in Grade Five, Sarah Murphy. So congratulations to each of them for those recognitions. For teachers and staff, I wanted to give a huge shout out to Abby Bachelor for her amazing photography and her work around supporting other teachers and staff in the building. She really is quite good at that and is always thinking of others. Last Friday, we had a pop-up smoothie bar for staff before school. So a huge thank you to Katie Chamberlain, Kim King, Ann Murphy, John Ramsey, Alyssa Greenler, and Eli Chamberlain for helping to make that happen. It was just a quick half hour before school, but it was fun to get together. Sometimes it's amazing, even in that building, the primary wing staff and the middle school wing staff might not see each other, so we're trying to have some easy ways for those folks to connect during the school week. I'd also like to thank Candace Pets for juggling all the substitute teachers needed during the month of field trip mania. So every time there are, you know, six or seven or 12 staff people out in the building who are on a field trip, we need extra substitutes. So Candace really does do an amazing job with that. Wanted to talk with the board tonight about the policy change that was made last month. So last month, we discussed at the board meeting and you approved changes to the parent student handbook. As a part of that process, we added a new rule regarding wearable technology. That change was made at the request of teachers and to support focus and learning. The rollout of that change was a little clunky and I'm sorry for that as families were caught off guard to that change. I heard from about seven parents, no more than eight, with questions or concerns and some thanks. So I've spoken to the school union and they're very much, the teachers' union, they're very much in support of this change. And I believe you have received as a part of correspondence tonight, a letter that states their support of the change. I also have received some requests from some parents requesting that we look at that policy and consider safety and communication. I think it's up to the board's decision tonight whether or not we hold that policy as it is and hold it under review for the next month. Or we, which would be my recommendation for the next month, we keep that change in place for the month while it's under review and then we come back after there's been some collaboration between some teachers and parents. But I will leave that up to the board tonight. I'll keep going through my report and then maybe we can come back to that in a moment. I wanted to remind everyone that there's a P T A meeting this Wednesday night in the library. And I wanted to let folks know that there's no school next Monday for Columbus Day, but there's also no school next Tuesday because it's a Teacher Professional Development Day. Want to let the board, remind the board that on Wednesday, October 18th, Katie Preston, an author and activist Holocaust survivor, is coming to Plymouth Elementary School to speak with our eighth graders about her experience during the Holocaust. It's a very hopeful message. And I wanted to give a quick facilities update on a couple of things. So the gymnasium heat project was completed. We checked the heat last week, it's working well, however, it is a little loud. There's maybe some air in the system, we're checking on that. The sound system for the gymnasium will be installed, new sound system during Thanksgiving break. New wall pads for the gymnasium will go off Christmas break. The scoreboards and the refinishing of the floor will happen next summer. As you may be aware, if you walk around the campus, there's some drainage issues with the immense amount of rain that we have received recently. And so I want to let the community know that the area near the greenhouse and the shed will have new drainage completed this month. We're planning to include some site work for the middle school swing set to go up. So we're really excited to get the swing set up this fall. We're hoping that can happen in the next month. We have discussed at the board level the south wing and the primary playground drainage issues. We have decided to include that in the C I D plan as a part of the budgeting process. So you will see that in December when the budget gets presented to you. The potential of the library project, which we're working hard towards, I wanted to just give you an update on that. The mechanical drawings have been completed by Charles Buckley. They were sent to C C I at the end of last week for a quote. Stewart still needs to finish up the design for the glass enclosure. The furnishing design and wish list is in progress. Beth Wilk is working really hard on that. And the quotes and design work will be completed for our November board meeting. We really need that to be completed by November in order for us to purchase what we need to make that happen next summer. You'll remember that all of that would, I believe, be funded through the ESSER grant, the COVID grant. There are some other smaller projects that are going on. We're opening some faucets and some sinks, exploring a heat issue in one classroom. And we are exploring replacing outdoor loudspeaker amp. The quote for that has come in at $3,000. So I believe we can cover that with this year's operating budget. That is my section of the principal's report. Before we move to Kelly's report on safety and athletics, I wondered if the board had anything that they wanted to respond to regarding the wearable technology.
So my thoughts are, we certainly can take a look at it again. We, if the teachers support it, then I support it.
That's just an echo.
Feedback.
Sorry, you get to hear yourself twice.
I know, I can't hate it. I can't stand it. So that's my thoughts. I'm, you know, I'm obviously happy to listen to the public input, take a look, listen, see what people have to say, and then we can talk about it next month.
Would you like me to read this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Love to hear it.
So it's just a letter from the union leadership today, so I'll just read that out loud. On behalf of the P E A, we are writing this letter to you in the hopes that you will maintain the policy regarding cell phones and wearing technology that was adopted into the P E S handbook on Monday, September 11th. The P E A supported the steps taken and approved by the board and feels that continuing this policy is in the best interest of both students and staff. Cell phones and wearable technology, including but not limited to smartwatches, earbuds, glasses, et cetera, has advanced to the point where these devices can and have compromised academic integrity. They have also proven prior to the ban to be a distraction to the learning environment. This comes in the form of texting, playing games, and/or taking, sending, and receiving pictures and videos. These are all serious legitimate concerns because of the violation of both the student handbook regarding academics and the learning environment, but also because of the violation of the rights of teachers and students to not be filmed and/or recorded without their consent or knowledge. None of the limitations that have been implemented violate any of the R S As at the state level. In the event that the current policy regarding cell phones and wearable technology is removed and a student uses a device to video within a classroom without consent, the student may be in violation of RSA 570A2, the New Hampshire wiretapping statute. In closing, the P E A would like to reiterate the importance of maintaining the current policy in the P E S handbook. We thank you for taking our considerations at this time as we feel it has been an important and necessary change for both students and teachers. Thank you.
So that change is in place now, the one we voted on last month?
Yes, it's already in place.
Yep. I'd suggest taking Tanya's, oh, Tanya's got her.
I just wanted to say that while this was sort of a bumpy rollout, I had allowed families to have their kids have their, the smartwatches in watch setting with parent controls. So we had a compromise for that while we were managing the change. So I think we would need, if we were going to stick to the policy as it's written, it would not allow for that watch setting with parent controls.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna show how much of a tech dummy I am, because I have no idea what that means.
I think you can, but the challenge, I feel like with the wearable controls, Tanya, is it becomes kind of a big, right, it's a big lift for the school to enforce that, right? Where I think if it's just saying that we don't want it on students' bodies and out visible, then it kind of takes away that parent control piece being an issue. And I think that that's a big ask, right, to make sure that that's in place for everybody to be able to control that. It is possible.
So is parent control that they, the parents basically set the watch and their, the kid's gonna only use it for calling them or something like that?
They can limit the number of people that can text. Like, you know, you could set the watch so that only parents could be texting them during the day.
And you can set the time.
The timeframe.
So you can limit it. And let it only watch between school hours.
But there's no way to really monitor that at the school level?
I think that's hard to monitor.
Yeah, no, that's not feasible.
What, Tanya, why did the parents want to be able to do that during the day, during the school day?
I think that my, in my discussions with parents, there were two pieces that they felt were important to consider. One was safety in the event of an event at school that they wanted to be able to reach their children and communicate with their children and know their whereabouts through the tracking device and through the texting capabilities. And two, just that communication piece, you know, as plans change or issues come up during the day. More for plans changing. I don't, none of the parents that I spoke to wanted to be able to communicate necessarily during the school day about issues, but I think to act, my impression it was for safety and communication if plans change.
So I just have a question, just want to make sure that if there's a student that needs to call a parent during the day, they have the capability to ask their teacher to go to the main office to make that telephone call, is that correct?
That's correct. And that is what we, not only prefer, but that is our rule.
Okay.
Communication comes through the main office. That way we know what the change is and if there's a concern, we can help solve that problem at school with the adults.
Tanya, what was the safety concern? Did the parents give an example of that, what their safety concern was, why the kid would need to communicate with them during the day? Is it in the event of like a catastrophic event in the school?
Yes.
So my concern with that though, right, is that, let's say that every parent has that ability to know exactly where their child is in the school during some kind of a major event, right? What is that knowledge gonna do for the parent? Because we don't want every parent trying to come to the school and retrieve their child at that moment, right? That could be very disruptive to the law enforcement response, right, and the school safety plan, right?
Yes.
So I don't know.
I would just go, I mean, my advice, have Tanya review it. If there's any little loopholes that we've missed as far as implementation, you know, we always set these rules and it's gonna be clunky. It's whether, you know, some devices are used for medical reasons, some are used for, so if there's certain areas where there's an exemption or something that's just unreasonable for families to follow, or there has to be something else that looks like we just want to make sure we're considerate of that, it just gives us some time. But right now, it won't change, but if there's something that comes up, they could obviously contact Kelly or Tanya and they could look at the situation to see if something else needs to be considered.
So question then, if we, they take the month to look at that, would we change something in the policy that would reflect that a parent could?
The policy could come back looking exactly the same as you see it now, or based on some of the more information that Tanya has and maybe doing a little bit more research on what's happening around us, maybe some other schools are coming up with?
You know, even on a medical sense that if, you know, we don't know what's gonna come out in technology next month, but, you know, if a child has diabetes or something and they have some sort of wearable, you know, device that...
We already, we already give exemptions. Two of the seven people who contacted me were about medical devices.
And that's always in place for anything that we have, like there's always an exception.
Already.
Okay, because I want to make sure...
We already give exemptions and will always give exemptions for medical technology.
Okay, I just want to make sure in that regard that parents
Right.
know that they can do that.
Right.
Or have that exception.
Yeah, so I think we'll do that, table it and come back, look at it again next month. So, Tanya, is there anything else you need to add?
That is the conclusion of my principal's report. If Kelly has something to add from safety and athletics, that would be good.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, after all that, let's talk sports.
So just a couple of real quick notes. The teams are really doing a great job. We've got about three or four weeks left in the season. Just to mention a couple quick things, like our three soccer teams, out of the three of them, I think we have a total of only two losses through all three teams. So they're really doing a great job. The football team is undefeated. Field hockey and cross country are really putting in some strong performances. I wasn't able to get outside to the entire game today, but it looked like they were winning. I think I saw three goals in the minutes that I was standing there, so. And then our volleyball team is really young and fairly inexperienced, but they are improving game by game by game and you can watch it happening. And it's exciting to watch those kids and just the excitement on their face when there's a good rally going back and forth.
Volleyball squad we found on Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, and we want...
Yeah, yeah, great, for the first, right, first one?
Yes.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so they're really stepping up, so that's fun to watch. And I know that all of our coaches are really pleased with all the efforts that the kids are putting in. We did need to extend our season by a few days into the week of October 23rd just because of some of the rain and the heat issues that came up that we needed to reschedule. So we're happy to be getting those games in. And then just so you're aware, this Thursday, our cross country team has their home meet, which is very large, we have 12 schools coming to us. So that'll be a lot of runners, a lot of people on campus, but we're really looking forward to a great day, it usually is. I have already started working on the winter sports and signups will likely be held by the end of October. And the preseason start date will be somewhere in the beginning of November, but that date is yet to be determined as I'm speaking with coaches and seeing what works out for everybody. As far as the Safety and Joint Loss Committee, at this point, we've got two fire drills and a bus evacuation drill have been held. We'll have some more coming up this month. We also did a test of that InformaCast app that folks have on their phones and laptops and whatnot. We did find that we had the majority of our faculty and staff members, it was good and notification came through, but we did have some glitches with some other folks. And some of it, all those names got put forward to Carol Lavassa, so she's gonna be checking the system and working on troubleshooting it. Some of it just had to do with the permissions they had allowed on their phone or didn't allow, and some of it was just within the system itself. So we'll be working out those kinks, but we're looking to test those several more times every time that we're doing a drill, just to make sure that it's working correctly for everybody and just getting people more comfortable with using the app. Officer Bonin and myself came to the school on Saturday, September 23rd. We did check out the secure classroom alarm, set that off, made sure that that was functioning appropriately, and it was. And we've got a safety committee meeting coming up this Wednesday, October 4th.
And if the board is okay with it, I'd like to ask for a motion on the $3,000 to move ahead with that amp and speaker so we can get the sound better for safety issues outside to expend now.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of expending that $3,000 to get the outside amp?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. That's all you got?
I've got you.
That's enough, Kelly, thank you. Appreciate it, yeah. All right, thank you for coming to the school board meeting. We're gonna open it up to privilege of the floor number one. Don't all jump in once, guys, it's so... I mean, it's cool. Is anyone on Zoom that you need to say? No? All right. Well, very exciting discussion on privilege of the floor. All right, we're gonna move on to our discussion items. Parental objections to specific course materials policy first reading.
All right, so I generally try to bring the required policies to you and not all the extras. So this is a required policy based on an RSA a couple of years ago. For some reason, it wasn't in place. So by statute, you need to have it in order. This is just basically a regurgitation of the law, giving parents a choice to opt out of certain course material and the process. So it's right in front of you, you can take the month to take a look at it, we can come back and approve it on the second reading, or if you're comfortable now, you can move ahead with the approval.
Are you saying we don't have anything like this in the...
No, you need, yeah, you're required to have this, so...
Right, right, but we don't have anything presently, is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
Not formally. And not that matches the RSA. Any questions?
There is a, is there, I mean, not a policy, but I guess a practice, because I remember getting notifications when my kids were younger about kind of, I think one of them was a book or film that dealt with suicide.
So we've always, so generally, if there's any topic like that, it's been our practice to notify parents of anything that might be a little controversial or if you want to look at it. This goes a little deeper, I think, as far as really getting into kind of more what's going on politically in the past couple of years, I think. You'll see access to instructional materials. If you, you know, I think what had happened, if parents were asking for materials, they weren't getting it in a timely manner statewide. So we've always, if you want to look at something, happy to show you. So whether they call my office or Tanya or the teacher, I mean, there's nothing, we were pretty transparent. I mean, Tanya reviews all the curriculum instruction assessment almost every month. So it's just a little bit more specific as to parental rights and kind of the process around that.
Did you all get a chance to read it? Do you have any questions? I'm, I mean, I don't think we need to take another month, I'm happy with how it reads.
And is there any sort of procedure that has to be set up in regards to that last paragraph that the parents have liked to receive a minimum of two weeks' advance notice of all materials to be used with respect to instruction on human sexuality and humans...
Yeah, so that's usually in, Tanya can tell me when those units, yep, Tanya?
So as a part of our health curriculum, Jed McManus does send home letters to inform parents about that content. And I know that, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, she did have some, I think it was the year before, she had a parent who wanted a lot more information and she was able to give that parent, you know, breadth of information about her curriculum and the parent was very comfortable with what the curriculum included.
And it's given in plenty of time, more than two weeks?
Correct.
So there's a letter from her?
Yeah, right.
Goes home with the back to school letter?
Back to school letter, okay, beginning of the year. So we already... So we already follow that.
Okay.
You're good. Someone might want to make a motion to accept the policy? Sure.
But before we do that...
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
Given the political climate in this regard, I may be stepping in a big puddle here, but do we, so we would, I think this is perfectly reasonable.
It is.
But we have not heard anything from the, I have not heard anything from the public. I don't know if Tanya's heard anything. If this is a procedural matter of just putting in place something that has to be done, that's fine, but I'm wondering, like, unlike the wearables conversation, like, there's been public communication with Tanya about it. In terms of this, there hasn't been.
I think it's a, it's a little different from the wearable technology piece, because the wearable technology piece is more of like a school rule, and that tends to have a lot more input. This is, this is absolutely, already is required by law for the school board to adopt the policy.
Yeah.
And this, if you ever want to come back to a policy and you're getting public input to, to consider something else, you can always add something to the, to, to the policy if you'd like, but this is just what you're required to do.
Yeah.
So typically, any required policy is just what it is, and the public can comment, but there's not really much I can do with the language around that.
Yeah.
Unless you want to add, add something else and be more restrictive.
Right, okay, great, thank you, appreciate that.
And how often does this happen? Tanya, does this happen very often? No?
No, it happens periodically that a parent will opt out of a movie sometimes. Since I've been there, I think one family chose not to have their child read, I just know policy, there was a seventh grade book about the boys...
Swim That Rock.
Typically...
Swim That Rock, she said.
Yes, so there's, on occasion, but, but not very often.
Typically, S A U-wide, I get less than 10 requests, so not much.
Not much.
Well, I think it's a good idea to have this in place. If it's by law that we're supposed to have it in place, then we should vote to have it in place, and if there's public opinion of it, then we can review it again next month, or, you know, we need to do that. But I, I think it's important then for parents to know that this does have to happen, and the, the school does have to inform parents. I mean, that's for the parents' sake, to inform them, so.
Yeah, and it is an option, right?
Right.
That some might not know it's the right, right?
And then people want to come back, then we can open it up for further review.
We can always amend the policy.
Right.
Correct. We can amend a policy at any time.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Good?
Yeah, good.
Okay.
I would make the motion that we accept the policy as... Oh, sorry.
No, no, I didn't. I really didn't. I was about to, but I didn't, so don't worry.
All in favor of accepting it?
I was like a mess.
Teetered in the edge.
All right, great, thank you. Any other business?
Did you want to do privilege of the floor, number two?
Yes.
Oh, I had no, no, no other business, sorry.
Checking off my...
I thought you were moving into non-public. Go ahead.
Privilege of the floor, number two. Yes, hi, Jason.
Hi, things like that, can we have copies of that for the floor? It'd be nice to be able to read what you guys just adopted, since we're all in the dark.
Sure.
Absolutely.
I'm happy to share. Do my notes. I think it's always hard to, for the school folks to know how many people are going to come.
I totally understand, even if there was like a digital link thing, saying, go to this link, yeah, put a bit link in.
And this is the first thing, too, that we are, we're seeing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're reviewing it, so I hear what you're saying, so thank you for that. Anyone else? Yes, hi, Geneva. Hi, thanks for coming.
Yeah, I, I wanted to, as a technology teacher, I teach a lot of your kids, K through eight, and, and I just wanted to say that in our technology classes here at school, we really, we really try to adopt a sense of connecting with each other before connecting with technology. So even though I only have a 40-minute class time, I do spend almost 10 minutes at the start of my class time just with our classes talking, with their Chromebooks closed in front of them, and it's, I'm pretty strict about it. If they even try to peek at it or open it, I'm like, bring me your Chromebook, and then we'll have a conversation, you can earn that back with a quick conversation. And I think that sentiment links a lot to this wearable technology piece, where Chromebooks are huge, they're very easy to manage, whether or not a kid is opening it. Cell phones are the size of calculators now, pretty much, and then we have wristbands. So as you have these conversations, I just want to say out loud to you all that at Plymouth Elementary, in our technology classes, we do practice that connection-first piece, and I hope that's part of the conversation about wearable technology in our school.
Thank you. Is there anyone? No? Anyone else? Anything to say? All right, moving on to claims of payroll, did everybody sign?
I think, everybody else set with that?
Yeah, good. And you've read our correspondence?
Yeah, that's the only correspondence I had tonight.
So just need a motion to go into non-public?
Yep.
Make a motion to go into non-public?
I second it.
All in favor of going into non-public? Thank you for coming to the meeting.